Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry for the delay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Open Public Meetings Act statement.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time, and place there posted in Seacorke Town Hall on the bulletin board of your education administration building as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record, Jersey Journal, and district website.
Well, excellent. I pledge allegiance. Roll call.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry? Mr. Diombre?
Present.
Ms. Geller?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Lyons?
Present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December nineteenth
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 19th, 2024.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Mr. Adeta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Abstain.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Have to abstain.
Showcase. So this month, February, is Crossing Guard Appreciation Month, and we are very blessed to have wonderful crossing guards in our district that are out there in the sunshine, in the rain, in the snow, and they cross our children and take care of our children very well, so we would just like to present you with certificates as a token of our appreciation. If I could have Mr. McKeever, Councilman McKeever, excuse me, come up and help with that.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Uh, sorry we're late. Told you to blame me for that. Well, I guess it was about a month ago at the meeting when I, 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 I said something about this crossing guards. Had to do with the bad weather morning when you were all out there. It's incredible, you know, uh, yeah, I know. So, uh, in my neighborhood where I live, there's a woman who's a crossing guard, and I see her every morning, walking down the street, um, rain or shine, snow, just like you guys, it's, uh, you know, we thank you very much, we really do, and, uh, with my buddy here, we go way back. Um, so I apologize if I pronounce anything wrong, I'm gonna do the best I can, there's a couple of tough ones, but I think I can do it. So first, Sonia Abashaka. Sonia? All right? Alyssa Badi. Hello there. How are you?
Alyssa's right on Fifth Street, Red Rock.
That's not an easy one, I know, especially when the garbage trucks go down Fifth Street. I know, you gotta live in Seacaucus to understand that. Sandaya Barawan. Wow, sorry, Barawan.
Also, as your name is called, please remain standing. Up here.
Natalie Bader? We'll make sure they get them. I'll hand the living room if I have to. Rinku Bahatina? Bahati Ni? Upani, sorry. Kathleen Bliss? Rebecca Dominguez Hilario? Sandra Echeverry? Exidia Estrada? Edie Estrada? Dawn Flig? Nori Gomez? Derek Gonzalez? Jeanette Gonzalez? Luan Gonzalez?
Hi, how are you?
Yeah. Lydia Guadalupe? Vinnie Galino? Jean Hector? Linda Kalina? Good to see you. Mary Ann Cott? Ludmilla Kovarik? Dana Lamp? Phyllis Lennon? Nori Martinez? John Master Pietro? William O'Hara? What was it, 1977? Class of 77? Donna Pachaji. Is that the first, first class?
First.
Hey. We're originals. Benjamin Rivera? All right. Tess Harra Samara Kuhn Gaydon Rand. I know, I did all right on that one. Sheila Witrock. I know. Not exactly. Thank you. And Sarah Valario. Hey, thanks, everyone. We'll, uh, we'll definitely see you guys tomorrow, I hope, right? I know, otherwise, nobody can cross the street. We have one more. Deana Janulis. I'm so sorry, but let me just make sure, because if it's not here, we'll get it from you.
I did respond that I was coming, thank you.
No, yeah, it's, it could be.
It's probably not here, at the office.
It could be my fault. Well, I'll look, let's get in a picture.
I am.
Here, Deana Janulis. You got the best one, then I'll get the second next to you.
I'm behind this one. It's like a podium. Yeah. The hell you say that. It's like, you're, you're. Sarah's gonna be a lot of podiums. No, no problem, thank you. Move to the, move to the best one. How you gonna move this one over here? A little sideways, when we all fit in. There we go. How you gonna get that? Suck it in, girl. Hold it. Oh, shit. Right? Are we done? How you doing, we now? Although I did a picture. Now one, now one.
I really get all the security straight.
I know, she loves you. She, she does.
1977, that's the first country. I love her, fuck you. That's why he's.
You're in order, right? That was the first class, right? Yeah, yeah.
All right. Bye, everybody. Thank you. School, garden, school. Congratulations.
Hey, Don.
In the morning, Don. Thank you, Charlie. See you in the morning. Oh, really? Don, ah. Thank you, Charlie. Bye, Mary.
One more round of applause for the crossing guards. Thank you, thank you all for coming out this, this evening. We will skip the student representative report tonight as Paul, oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. Thank you for all that you do. We will be skipping the student representative report this month as Paul is not available to attend this evening. Correspondents?
No correspondents.
No correspondents. Acting superintendent report? Remember you abstained from this except the, okay, the January. Lance?
All right, um.
Is that you? No. Oh, I'm sorry, the.
There is, um.
An HIB, I'm sorry.
I've had numerous meetings over the last few weeks. I, I actually felt like this was a job, probably starting three weeks ago, because I didn't, I didn't really feel like this was a job, and the job that I do every day, I never feel like is a job, but this started to feel like a job a little bit. So I figured, hey, how, how am I gonna make everybody understand where we're at? And I know this gets videoed, so I'm hoping I do this right. It's very difficult to get everybody to be on the same page in any job you do, and probably the job I do that best is, is, is coaching football. You see, because football has the same goal. Players, coaches, wanna win. So these committees that, one of the meetings I went to was called Divisions Committee. Recently, I had to discuss goals. You know, when I, when I think about those things, you know, I, you know, as football coaches, you study things that people do for interviews, and, and, and it's kinda, it's kinda disappointing sometimes because big business steals from coaching. And there are so many coaches and athletic directors that wanna be principals and vice principals and superintendents, and they never get that opportunity because people look down upon them sometimes because they coach. And I, and I, so I represent a group of people throughout the state. I've even gotten emails tri-state telling me that I, I, I have to do a good job here. So I'm not great with the word vision. I'm not, because in what I do, you could have a vision of even a play, and that play can't be running because somebody got hurt, and now you have to change that. So I'm not really great with vision. I'm very good with core values. I think honesty is the strongest one we could all have here. Be honest with yourself, quite honestly. So if I'm gonna write one goal down, I'm gonna remind everyone here and the town. Seacaucus is a unique word. It has "us" at the end of it. Us, U-S. It's Seacaucus. And I think if you're gonna be on the Seacaucus team, "us" is the only thing that's gonna matter. And that "us" includes a heck of a lot of kids that need everything we can do for them. That "us" has to do with that house that you own, or that place that you live in this town. And if the "us" makes a better Seacaucus, Seacaucus is better. I promised someone today that I was gonna talk about Seacaucus today. I promised the mayor of this town that we're gonna start revamping the pride that this town deserves to have in itself. So the "us" had better be a major part of what we do, because with all due respect, it's one of the only places in this world that has "us" at the end of it. It is Seacaucus. I hope that makes sense to everybody. That's all I got.
Thank you, Charlie. Lance?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bullying findings as reported by the acting superintendent, and are available at the administrative offices for review. In addition, I would like to affirm number 284752HSS12182024.
Second.
Lance, where are you reading from? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you gave him an addition, okay. I'm sorry. Call the roll of discussion?
So that the board members are clear in terms of the, the recommendation, the third item, which was a series of numbers, relates to a hearing that the board conducted in executive session.
Oh, sorry. Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Mr. Adeta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Abstain from December 20th, 2024, and yes, from January 1st to January 16th of 2025.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
The same as Ms. Geller.
You wanna read the next part, Lance, the second page, the Student Safety Data System reporting?
Well, we'll, we're gonna put it up here.
Oh, you're doing a presentation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and it's. So I'll sit, and you see up on the screen just a couple of things that we need to discuss. So everybody often wonders, when something happens in a school, you know, how do you keep records of that? So if you ever had a chance, like I have, to go over to the board office.
You walk in. See Leanne Nicolich. Buildings and grounds, you turn the corner, Veronica Melendez. Anne Marie Greco. They're in the superintendent's. Office. You go down the hall, Eileen Lacerdo. Michael Poindexter, Pat Kakuji. Debbie Bittaker, Judy Primefall. Grace Show. Phil Heaney floats everywhere, but he also has a place in here. I don't. I visit there. I respect that office very much for the people that work in it. So all this data, data. Goes to superintendent's assistants. Eileen Lacerdo, both of them helped me today. So if you look up there. You see trainings. The staff, the teachers, everyone. We're all trained, we have things called safe schools, then you look at programs, programs, you know, things like character education type things. Uh, week of respect, you know, type of stuff. So if you look at the first part of the school year. We, we, we had a lot going on, and as the school year goes on, it, it'll continue. To the end where there's basically twenty total things that we do throughout. So if you think about it, there's ten months in a school year calendar. So this is, you know, this is an ongoing. Presentation every day, you walk into a teacher's room, they're always talking to the kids about behaving and things like that. Taking care of each other. So if we go to the second part of this. We look at our incidents. Okay? So the second screen of this report. The incidents that we deal with. Are broken down by school. And if you look down at the bottom, if we go district wide. Total incidents, we had three, two were violence, one was substance. And then if you continue and go over. Other incidents leading to removal, basically punishment, et cetera. Totaled seven. And if, if you look back, you'll see the HIB alleged, and then if you come back to the middle, the HIB confirmed. So three alleged, zero confirmed. So. With over two thousand kids. I think we're doing pretty good. So that is. Really a, a good pat on the back to our administrators, our teachers, our staff. Classroom, aides, lunch. Sir, uh, people that work in our lunchrooms, you can go on and on. Crossing guards. You know, bus drivers, that's, that's a full effort. And that's pretty good. So, we're gonna try to continue that for the next. Five months and get to the summertime. So that's the report.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the student safety data of system reporting by the acting superintendent.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolinino?
Yes.
Ms. Adeta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diambre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Abstain.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Hey, Ms. Geller.
Business administrator board secretary report?
No report this evening.
Okay. Public forum, agenda items? None? Okay. Okay, we have none this evening? Governance committee personnel?
So under personnel, our agenda includes the hiring of a special education teacher and a physical education teacher. Our supervisory contract has been ratified. There is a change to this year's district calendar, which entails the district utilizing unused snow days. So the last day of school will be June twenty-fifth. Next year's calendar is also on the agenda tonight. We'll be working with the University of Kentucky and having a social worker practicum performed at our district. We have a bus driver of seventeen years, Suzanne Olson, Susan Olson, who will be retiring, which is a wonderful thing for her, thank you for your service. We've also discussed looking at our substitute teacher rate and taking that into account when budgeting for next year as Grace and Patty do the budget for next year. Also, uh, two updates, well, another update I have is that the Beyond the Bell program at both Huber Street and Claridin will include a multi, multi-language class to further support students learning the English language. This class will run from April to June and will be from three o'clock right after school until four thirty. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R. One point zero one through R one point two zero and motion M one point zero one.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes, I have to recuse myself from R one point zero two, R one point zero five, and R one point two zero.
Mr. Bolinino?
Yes.
Ms. Adeta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diambre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes, but I have to recuse myself from R one point oh five and R one point two oh.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Policy?
Under policy, there are several policies that are going through first and second readings. One in particular is policy P five one one one. In particular is one that the board is voting on, allowing seniors who move out of district to complete their senior year at Sea Caucus High School for a cost. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R two point zero one through R two point zero two.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolinino?
Yes.
Ms. Adeta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diambre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes, but I, I think I have to abstain on the HIB December report, if that's included in this. Note here on that.
Yeah.
Is that not on this, under this?
No, that's just the.
Okay, thank you, yes, then.
You're good. Yep.
Thank you.
We're good, will you call the roll? Okay. Education committee, curriculum?
Good evening, all, um, the education committee had our monthly meeting last Thursday, February sixth, it was a very productive meeting. Uh, I just wanna share a couple of conversations that we had. One of the, I think, exciting developments that we discussed, uh, we talked about possibility of developing and implementing a study skill programs for our student. In every grade, um, we feel like this program will make our students more successful in their academic careers and will help with transitioning at every level, whether it's from elementary school to middle school or from high school to college. Um, another discussion we had was about, um, our district readiness in case, uh, we have to deal with federal immigration enforcement activities in our schools. We discussed and reviewed the established protocols and the support and resources that available to our students, our families, and our staff members. Now, I would like to move, uh, I would like to make a motion, um, to accept the recommendations of the acting superintendent and to approve and adopt resolution R three oh, R three point oh one, it's approval of field trips. Um, I believe we have two field trips for each of our schools, uh, for Claridin, Huber, Middle School, and High School. Also, resolution three, uh, R three point zero two, approval to dispense of outdated technology, uh, with no residual value. And last resolution, R three point zero three. Um, it's approval to accept the slide studies at donation of actually our board member, um, Christina DiBari. Thank you, Christina.
Second.
I'm sorry, discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolinino?
Yes.
Ms. Adeta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes, but I need to recuse from R three point zero three.
Mr. Diambre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes, I have a question, should I be abstaining in R four point oh two and four point oh three?
Not yet, not yet.
Just a few, thank you, no, okay, good, I'm good.
Yep, yep, you're good, that's okay.
Thank you.
Discussion, call the roll? Oh, you called the roll, I'm sorry. Operations committee, finance?
Okay, so this month, the operations committee was updated on, uh, the following buildings and grounds, uh, so we, uh, we are conducting interviews for new per diem custodians. Um, all the head custodians are being, uh, trained on how to use, uh, the, uh, building management system. We were also updated on the LED lighting. In the buildings around the district. Uh, they were also updated on, uh, all of the outstanding work orders that are being completed, there were three hundred and sixty-two, uh, total completed work orders this month. So, in Huber Street School, the lock replacement project is, uh, looking to be completed during the break. Uh, they are going to replace the generator. Also in Claridin School, uh, they're gonna start cleaning out the basement and, uh, the space over the gym in order to bring back the old school files, which is currently being stored in some storage units, uh, looking to save us, um, hopefully twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we're gonna update all the bathrooms in Claridin, uh, there was a question about. Uh, soil samples, uh, the, we do take soil samples annually at all schools since the oil tanks were removed. So if there's any questions, uh, there was a question about the soil sample, so yes, we do, uh, we do that. At the middle school, high school, the blue, uh, the blue red gym floor and the lighting project were completed. And as far as, uh, finance, we were updated on the budget process, um, that is still ongoing. For finance, I'd like to accept the recommendation of the business administrator board secretary to approve and adopt resolution R four point zero one through R four point zero eight as described below.
Second.
Discussion? Actually have something, um, about what you had said about the, um, soil samples, Joe. Was it discussed, you have in the notes, um, that it was discussed that we are OSHA compliant? So I just wanted to publicly mention that as well, that the soil samples were tested, and I believe the conversation, um, was that we were, we are OSHA compliant. I just wanted to put that out there publicly, okay? Anyone else? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
No, hold on, you have to recuse from R, um, four point zero seven.
Yes, I have to, uh, recuse myself from R four point zero seven.
Mr. Bolinino?
Yes.
Ms. Adeta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diambre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Tatiana, you have to recuse from R four point zero two and R four point zero three. The transfers, the budgetary transfers and financial reports from twenty twenty-four.
Recuse.
Okay.
Ms. Howard?
Yes to everything, but I have to recuse from R four point oh seven.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes, but abstain on R four point zero two and R four point zero three.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the ad hoc committees, uh, shared services, Mr. Lyons?
The shared service committee meeting was held on February the seventh from nine AM till ten AM at the Sea Caucus Town Hall. I'd like to thank Mayor Grinelli and Council McKiever for attending the meeting. There was a request to name a new softball field at Mill Ridge, as this field is the property of the town and the district is not using it. We asked the town for permission to begin the naming process, the mayor and council gave permission to start this process. A request was made for the town to assist with work and funding needs, update the courtyard at the Claridin School. The mayor and district discussed the desired upgrades and agreed to meet again in either late February or early March to begin planning the project. It was suggested that the updated area be renamed, add a second name to that area, everyone intended was amenable to that. The town and district have a mutual agreement to work together on numerous shared products. There's nothing in writing about these, it's just been a government's agreement for years, and, uh, the town and district help each other as much as possible. Our interim superintendent stated that the only time there is an issue or a form to be filled out is if the town comes into use any school buildings, that, uh, he will give them a form to fill out for that. We discussed demographics, except we keep everyone abreast of any changes that are going on within the city, within the town, and that would change the shared services agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Uh, legislation, there was no meeting, there has not been a meeting yet. Um, athletics, Bartletta?
Hello, we did, we did have a meeting for athletics, um, we discussed a number of issues, uh, and as Mr. Lyons said, we did approve, we did ask the town for approval of naming the, uh, new softball field after, uh, Frank Bartletta, who was the first softball coach in, in high school history. Um, and as he did state, we, it was amenable and that will, we will move that forward. Uh, in addition, that we're adding three plaques to Ripberg Hall for outstanding coaching achievement. Frank Bartletta for softball, Mr. A, uh, Coach Falco for baseball, and Mr. Tom Giorgio for tennis. Other items we discussed were signing days, um, for all sports, and that will be handled on a sport by sport basis. Uh, media days, all sports, the NJSIAA only does media day for football, um, but we are going to, um, reach out to all the coaches and ensure that a media day is done for all sports. And all, and another thing we all discussed is emails for coaches will be handled by, uh, will be Carol Shiner. Um, this will ensure accuracy of the emails going out, and she will then distribute to all the coaches.
Thank you, Mr. Bartletta. Technology, communications, Mr. Bolinino?
Thank you. Um, we discussed the, uh, current state of, uh, cyber threats and some of the incidences that have been reported by other New Jersey school districts, as well as school districts across the country. We got a report on the things that, uh, our district does to protect us from cyber attacks. We also received some recommendations and next steps on what we can do to improve our security based, uh, on assessments. We also discussed, uh, in communications, the way to, um, make some improvements to our websites. We discussed, you know, a few things that needed to be updated on our website, and we discussed, um, trying to see who was in charge of certain areas. Uh, Mr. Voorhees was going to meet with the administration, uh, and get all that sorted out, um, for the websites and for social media postings.
Thank you. Visions committee? Mr. Barry?
We held our first visions meeting this week, the purpose of the visions committee is to bring together administrators, teachers from the districts, parents, and members of the board to work together and collaborate on a vision for our district. It was an opportunity for everyone to come together and discuss our district. And like I said, it was a first meeting, so we really just pow-wowed, gathered some topics, talked about things that are doing, we're doing well, and things that we could build on in future meetings. Our school accolades and the opportunities our students have through extracurricular activities, honors classes, AP classes, are something that was talked a lot about, but the possibility, the opportunity for advertising this and improving our, you know, our accolade acknowledgement around our community is something that will be worked on. In addition, our increased multi-language population is something that we've seen increase in our district, and supporting them will benefit everyone. And more to come.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barry. Public forum? We have one person here this evening, Giselle Canals-Greneery?
Uh, good evening, I'm Stephen Fogarty, I'm the attorney for the Sea Caucus School District.
Uh, good evening. I'm Stephen Fowerty. I'm the attorney for the Seacaucus School District. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Seacaucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for the comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during the public session should carefully consider their comments since they, since they can be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number one one zero zero, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Your cooperation is appreciated, and the floor is yours.
Hello? Sorry, I'm not used to using a microphone. I'm just really loud. Um, my name is Giselle Canals-Grenieri, and I'm a resident of Seacaucus. Um, I am also a mother of a child who attends the Mill Ridge Preschool Program. I am also a pediatric occupational therapist who has been working with children with special needs for over ten years in both the school and the medical systems. Um, on February fifth, we received an email regarding the delayed openings for schools. In this email, the district stated that, quote, "Hubert Street and Claridin Schools, as well as the full-day pre-K disabled, will start at ten twenty AM." As a mother and as an educator, it saddens me that this district is referring to our children with disabilities using this type of language, of lame labeling language. As educators, we should be leading by example and using people-first language. Um, it really starts from the top, and we have to lead by that example and use that language so that we can travel it down to our children and our children and other people who just aren't aware of, um, what people-first language is. When I further looked into my child's IEP, I also noted that the program was named the same. Uh, this is a legal document. This is my understanding that this is what the, what you have chosen to name the program. Um, people-first language prioritizes the person over the disability or condition. It is a way of speaking that's intended to be respectful and inclusive. Um, there are many resources online that provide examples of appropriate and respectful language with, um, people-first language. For example, the program could be called Preschool Program for Children with Disabilities, or the Preschool Special Education Program. Um, there's just two examples of using, um, people-first language. Um, this just kinda gives another reason as to why it is really important. This district desperately needs a full-time and inclusive integrated program because we need to learn how to use this language to include our children. Um, at minimum, the district should refer to the program with people-first language, at least in communications with families and with the community. And I feel that the board should strongly consider changing how they refer to the program in legal documentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board Member Comments?
I have one question. On the Visions Committee, are the parents gonna be cycled, or the parents that are on that board are gonna be the ones that are on that board permanently?
Do you wanna answer that?
Um, I, when we talked about this, we talked about doing at least one year with the same group of people so that each meeting, we build on the topics that we build on, and then next year, start a new group.
And the other thought, if I can add on to that, the other thought was that, um, when we looked at, you know, the parents to choose, we went with the parents that represent each one of those schools. So we did the Claridin School PTA president, the Hubert Street, uh, PTA president. Um, we have a, um, parent representative, um, from the special education community. We have middle school. We did not, we did the middle school vice, uh, vice president? Vice president of the PTA for the middle school. And the high school, um, we went with, um, so the high school PTA president does not have a child in district. She did in the past, but she currently doesn't. So we went with, um, Monica Burkas. Um, she's been an advocate, and she runs that parent page on the, um, on the website. So we, we chose her for that reason, because she is very vocal and in touch with the parents. So we wanted somebody that would represent from each different, um, area and be able to relay the information back to their respective schools. And, you know, we asked that they come with questions for the meeting as well, so we figured that they would be a good point person. So that's, that's where we went with it, you know, like Christina said, but that's how we started with it. And we'll see how it goes, and then we'll go from there. I just wanna say, first of all, um, happy birthday to Joe. It's his birthday the month of February. We celebrate everybody's birthday, and we have a cake back in the room, so when we're done, if anybody wants to have a piece of cake, we, we were just crazy with board business back there, and we didn't get a chance to, uh, even cut the cake or sing happy birthday. So we could just run back in there quick. Um, congratulations again to all of the crossing guards on behalf of the board. Also, congratulations to Ms. Olson on behalf of the board, and, um, on a personal note, congratulations. I've known her for a lot of years, and I wish her well. Congratulations to the new hires, and on a personal note, congratulations to Julian Rocco, who I've known since he's three years old. So I was very happy to see his name on this agenda, so I wish them all well.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
I just want to, um, congratulate the triup of Hoboken-Weehawken and Seacaucus Hockey, who won their McMullen Cup this year. And I just wanna say, we're a very young hockey program for Seacaucus, and this is the third time that the Seacaucus boys have been able to capture the cup, which is a huge testament to all the ice time that Mayor Gennelli and the town council gives our boys. And it's a huge accomplishment. So thank you to the board for giving us an opportunity to have these boys have a team to play on, and congratulations to the boys.
And yes, on behalf of the board...
And the girls, 'cause we have an awesome girl on the team too.
On behalf of the board, congratulations to the hockey team. Um, I know in the beginning of this, um, changing triops, right, that, that's the, um, is that what it's called, the triop, right? Triop, uh, we were with different teams last year, and this was a new endeavor, uh, for us to partner with the Hoboken-Weehawken kids. And I'm happy to say that it was very successful. There was a lot of back and forth over it, and it was a very successful, um, year for the boys. And the, on behalf of the board, we're very happy for them. Also, I know you were gonna say something, and I also wanna congratulate the girls, but I'm gonna let Melissa speak on that because I don't know exactly what they won and what it's called specifically. So I'll, I'll let you speak on that for the cheer team.
So I wanna congratulate other students in our district. These are not high school students, but these are our elementary and our middle school students. So our team ranges from seven to fourteen years old. Actually, we have two high school, um, freshmen on our team also. They competed last weekend in the Wykata Global's down in Atlantic City for our, our competition cheer team, and they won first place. And they are now going to Las Vegas in May to compete in another global, um, championship. So it's pretty exciting for those girls.
And that's amazing. And I will say, since they're humble, and they're not gonna say it, Melissa's daughter is on that team, so congratulations to you and your daughter. And, um, and Christina's son is on the hockey team, so congratulations to Ian and, uh, your family as well. All good? Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.